I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome back after a holiday. It's November the 30th, 2015. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair. I also represent District Two. Joining me today is Commissioner Shelley Beulah, representing District One.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Bob Archer, representing District Three. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk, if we could start with our first item.
Yeah, our first item is consent agenda.
Are there any questions or comments regarding consent agenda?
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Archer to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Our next item is item four, new business, A County Clerk. There are no voucher payments today, so under A two, consider correction orders.
I'll make a motion to approve the correction orders.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B, County Counselor, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four eighty-nine dash twenty fifteen with Valeo Behavioral Health Care, Inc., to provide mental health care services to the residents of Shawnee County in 2016 with an allocation of one million, six hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, six, twenty-six thousand five hundred and twelve dollars.
Good morning Commissioners, Rich Eckert, County Counselor. This is our yearly agreement with Valeo. As you know, each year you have an allotment to Valeo. By statute, we are required to provide some sort of mental health care. We have chosen to contract that out as opposed to operating our own center. We contract with Valeo. The major change this year is that you've added a hundred thousand dollars from your 2015 allotment. So last year this was a one point five million dollar contract. Now it's a one point six million dollar contract. And I do believe Representatives of Valeo are here if you care to have any questions or discuss anything with them.
I don't know that we have a lot of discussion, but I would like to welcome the new CEO or executive director. If you would come to the podium at least introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Bill Persinger. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Valeo Behavioral Health. And accompanying me this morning is Dr. Jennifer Davis, our Board Chair. We just want to say thank you for your support. It's a cornerstone of what we do and we're pleased to be of service.
Bill, welcome to the community and I know that we look forward to your tenure as the CEO and have had...
Many, many years, we hope.
And so, again, welcome very much.
Thank you very much.
Hey, this is an increase over the last year's budget.
Yes, sir.
And I know that there's been community interest in how we do our programming and we look forward to the ideas that you might have in how we might improve mental health services in Shawnee County and improving the livelihoods of those that are in need.
Thank you very much. It's our, uh, it's our mission and to take care of the most vulnerable and help them on their path to recovery. And we want to focus on work supports and housing and public safety and, uh, you know, we just want to get people started on their path to recovery from, from day number one when they choose to do that. So we just couldn't do without your, your folks' support and I can't say thank you enough. And I might defer to our Board Chair for any comments she may have, but, uh, we're, uh, we're just ready to keep moving forward, so.
Just, Bill, you might point out that you also provide dollars then to Family Service and Guidance Center?
We do.
And then there was, there's one other.
Breakthrough House, yes.
Breakthrough House, yes. Okay, and you three work together and...
We're in a longstanding partnership and a tradition that we respect and value.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner, I'd also like to welcome Bill and to take this opportunity to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule and meeting with the Commissioners individually. I think it was very helpful and very positive, so thank you for that.
It was a good start. Thank you very much. You feel very welcome. Thank you.
Let's move to approval of the contract.
Second. There's a motion made by Commissioner Beulah for approval of the contract, seconded by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you and goodbye.
Many thanks.
Our next item.
Item B two, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety dash twenty fifteen with William and Angela, Angela, Angelia Rauberg for purchase of property at twenty-four forty Southwest Second Street in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the construction of parking lot for the local health department.
Commissioners, this goes along with our new building we purchased for our local health department. We needed a parking solution. Uh, this is a solution that actually Commissioner Cook pointed out to us, so we do need to give him credit for this. This solution actually saves us quite a bit of money over the other two that we were looking at. So this is a very good opportunity for us. I will point out that this is a contingent contract. This contract doesn't take operation until the city grants us a conditional use permit. So if we do not get a cup that basically changes the zoning of this property to allow us to build a parking lot on it, we can walk away from this deal. So, uh, we're also looking at through the same process, putting in a, a walk to go across McVicker, a crosswalk with lights and, and, uh, you know, accompanying lines that will get people across the street. Um, and while we're doing it basically for a parking lot, I actually think it'll help that entire neighborhood as they seek ways perhaps to walk to the Walmart grocery store or the other places that are across McVicker. So actually I think that walkway will be helpful to the community at large. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, I just might note that this does fit within our community health improvement plan, finding safe routes. Um, we have, I know that's a key stone for the health agency, which is going to be right across the street from this parking lot. Um, being a resident of close to that neighborhood, there is only the crosswalk at Sixth and McVicker. Um, this is an area that is traveled. I've seen people try across McVicker and just getting across the street so they can walk the sidewalks and there's some great sidewalks and also to walk up on the former state hospital grounds, walking trails and such. And so this kind of fits in both the needs of the community as well as the needs of the health agency while saving the county dollars in the process. I don't know if there's questions that you might have for the County Counselor.
I don't think I have questions, but I, we did have at least a willing property owner who, who...
Yes, we did.
...made this happen as well.
They're actually, they'd actually sold the property earlier and that deal fell through and they were glad to be rid of it.
It's a good solution.
This has also gone through our facility manager and been over and has been vetted by him and his team and the architect as well. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, contract.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item.
Item C, corrections, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety-one dash twenty fifteen with the American Red Cross to obtain institutional pricing for training materials required to maintain CPR, first aid, and AED certification for all departments now.
Good morning Commissioners, Brian Cole, Department of Corrections. This is an annual renewal of a contract that we have with Red Cross that, uh, that we work with them on training our trainers and it also gives us the materials and supplies books for us to train all of our staff here, not just security staff and CPR. This goes in line with all of our accreditation standards that we have and this is critical to our mission at the department because we work with those a lot of times that, uh, you go into crisis or an emergency situation. And in fact, we've used CPR and stuff like that many times in the department for staff and for the inmates and visitors and the public. So this is something that, again, that we have, we budget for each year and I'd be happy to answer the questions you may have.
Any questions on this item?
Um, there's approval of the contract.
Motion made by Commissioner Beulah for approval, seconded by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item D, Public Works Solid Waste, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety-two dash twenty fifteen with Jackson County clarifying maintenance responsibility for Shawnee County Bridge OSN three twelve over Happy Creek and road maintenance for Northwest Ninety-Fourth Street between US Highway seventy-five and Wilson Road.
Good morning Commissioners, Tom Block, Public Works and Solid Waste. This is a Public Works item. And, um, to give you a little bit about it, uh, each county throughout the state has a list of bridges that is on their inventory that they are responsible for maintaining. Uh, here recently, um, and those lists are then forwarded to KDOT who keeps track of them on a statewide basis. KDOT recently notified us in Jackson County that there were two bridges that are on both of our lists, both our list and Jackson County, and they wanted us to clarify who was responsible for each one. So essentially, this agreement here is just putting it in writing to clarify that we are going to do exactly what we have been doing. We are going to maintain this bridge, this, this three twelve, which we've been doing for the past several years and, and it's just going to get it in writing so KDOT is clear on who's going to maintain it. And then there's another bridge that was, that, uh, also in question that we've been working with Jackson County and now we have an agreement with them that's had some revisions. That will be coming to the commission here in a week or so to clarify that one also. But essentially it really is just going to change nothing as far as we're concerned, as far as the maintenance is concerned. We just want to get it in writing and make sure everyone's clear. And these, these bridges are along the county line, so when you have roads along county lines, you're essentially just split by an agreement, maintenance of roadways and bridges along the county line. And this is just going to clarify it, so it's only going to be one, one county's inventory list, so. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. There's really, there's no cost as far as agreeing with this concern.
Questions regarding the memorandum?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you. Our next item.
Item E, Health Agency, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety-three dash twenty fifteen with Family Service and Guidance Center to produce, to provide clinical consultation support for FSGC Health Home Homes Program at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed ten hours per month.
Good morning Commissioners, Alice Weingartner, Health Agency. Um, this contract is a contract we've had in place with Family Service and Guidance since last year to help them meet their Health Homes Initiative. Um, the contract originally was scheduled to end in December. With the transition of the Community Health Center now being delayed, we just want to make sure that we have this contract in place to be able to continue to support them, so that's what this contract is for.
Questions regarding it?
Move approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Beulah, all second, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item E two, consider approval of request to fill three medical assistant positions in the Community Health Center at a total salary of thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents each, including benefits, and to fill any subsequent positions that become vacant as a result of filling these positions.
Um, Commissioners, both with this agenda item and the next agenda item, they kind of complement each other. Um, we have a number of vacancies in the Community Health Center that we're needing to fill. Um, as we look to fill these positions, we are looking to follow the staffing model that had been proposed with that consolidation with Grace Med. Um, so these positions are ones that are necessary for that continued support of the providers within the Community Health Center. Um, I am hopeful that some of the medical assistant positions will be filled by internal staff and that's what's resulting in potentially some office assistant positions opening up as well. Um, in the event that we don't get applicants pretty quickly, I would be back to you to ask for approval to use temp staffing as we work to fill these positions as well. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions regarding this request? Commissioner Archer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have been reluctant recently to have replacements for CHC personnel essentially because we were supposed to transition to Grace Med effective January one. Now because of a lot of bureaucratic bungling, bungling in Washington, it doesn't look like that's going to happen until July first. It could go over till twenty seventeen. So I had email exchange with Alice this weekend. These are vacant positions. They're budgeted and they do align with the Grace Med model, so I am going to support the replacements. And I'll make the motion to do so.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item E three, consider approval of request to fill three Office Assistant Two positions in the Community Health Center at a salary of thirty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars each, including benefits, and to fill any subsequent positions that become vacant as a result of filling these positions.
And again, as I just stated previously, these positions are positions that are supporting the Community Health Center operations and we continue to look to align with the model that we plan to use in the future.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Our next item.
Item E four, consider approval of request to fill a vacant social worker position at a salary of fifty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents, including benefits, and to fill any subsequent positions that become vacant as a result of filling this position.
Good morning Commissioners, Allison Olaho's Health Agency. Uh, the physician in front of you is a master's level social work physician that's recently become vacant. We are requesting permission to, um, to refill it. This is a physician that works in our maternal and child health area. Um, it is a grant-funded physician and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions regarding this?
Move approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Beulah, seconded by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item E five, consider approval of request to fill one licensed practical nurse position at a total salary of forty-two thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, including benefits, and fill any subsequent positions that become vacant as a result of filling this position.
Um, this position is an LPN licensed practical nurse position in our immunization department. That's a very, um, busy department. We've already decreased our staffing to, um, to respond to decrease in immunization rates or the number of immunizations that we're providing in that clinic. However, we continue to see quite a lot of folks coming through there and it's important that we go ahead and keep this position filled. Uh, this position also helps cover the on-call duties for our communal disease program, so there is some cross-training and other work outside of just immunizations.
Questions regarding this? All move approval?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item E six, consider approval of request to fill a vacant Office Assistant Two position at a salary of thirty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars, including benefits, and to fill any subsequent positions that become, become vacant as a result of filling this position.
This is a clerical position in our maternal and child health division. Um, this position has been vacant for some time and there has been an attempt by staff to do a lot of the clerical functions, but what I have right now is our division manager is doing the bulk of these and that is not very cost-effective for the type of work that she's doing and other professional level staff. There's quite a lot of database, there's several databases that this position is responsible for entering data, so doing a lot of data entry. Um, they also help with all of the ordering of supplies and other routine things that happen that clerical staff do, minute-taking things of that nature. And so we are asking to go ahead and fill this position at this point. Um, it is a grant-funded position and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Questions regarding this? All move approval of the request?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Our next item.
Item F, Information Technology, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety-four dash twenty fifteen with SHI International Corp. for a three-year extended warranty for three personal computers and a four-year extended warranty for three monitors that were purchased for use by the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost of one hundred and five dollars paid from the Parks and Recreation Department twenty fifteen budget.
Good morning Commissioners, Adam Blaine, Information Technology Department. Uh, this is a, a warranty that's purchased along with the equipment that we normally purchase that extends our ability to, uh, obtain spare parts in the event that something fails on any of these components. It's really difficult to purchase, uh, spare parts. Uh, you typically have to use the warranties to, to obtain those, so that's the purpose in, in getting these, uh, entertaining any questions you might have.
Any questions regarding this?
Move to approve the contract.
Motion made by Commissioner Archer, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner.
Our next item.
Item G, Facilities Maintenance, number one, consider approval of request to remove and replace carpet in the information technology office area at a total cost of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars to be paid from the IT twenty fifteen budget.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Pearl, Facilities Maintenance. Um, following our agreement with JP Construction on carpet replacement here at the courthouse and other county locations for the carpet squares, uh, we've been measuring different areas. IT is one of them. If Pat, Pat and his crew definitely need carpet, they've got a hazard in more than one way up there. And, uh, Pat says he has the money out of his budget to take care of this, so I'm delighted. Answer any questions?
As we look at this item and the following, um, would you anticipate that we're going to start addressing these throughout the courthouse that we have many needs to replace?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, virtually every area is in, in pretty sorry shape.
And so we would...
We'll just keep moving forward. If anybody has money in their budget, we can move forward even faster. Because my budget's a little tight.
So as we get closer to the end of the year and looking at our Audit Finance Director, Administrative Services Division, um, if department heads would like you to come in and evaluate, you should be contacting me to do so.
Yes, that would be ideal.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions, sir.
All move approval of the request to replace the IT carpet?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item H, Corrections, number one, consider authorization and execution.
G two.
I have, uh, oh, I'm sorry, G two. Um, I'm sorry, I don't really need to stand in there.
No, that's okay. I was getting ready to leave.
G two, consider approval, I was, it was all that whole new carpeting thing. I'm sitting here going, I have six dollars and twenty-two cents left in my budget. I don't have enough to put carpeting.
I'll get one square.
Exactly, square, that's right. Consider approval of request to remove and reinstall new carpet in Court Services Suites one oh four and B twelve at a total cost of twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars to be paid from the Court Services twenty fifteen budget.
Now, this is similar to the previous item. Uh, Court Services says they have the money and their carpet is definitely needed.
And, uh, Ms. Mays, thank you for coming down and joining us today from Court Services. Um, again, this is a carpet that's held up twelve years and experiences quite a bit of traffic.
Heavy traffic.
So, any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Archer for approval, seconded by Commissioner Beulah. All in favor say aye, all opposed passes three to zero. Thank you very much. Our next item.
And I thought I was seeing double too. Corrections, the second time. Uh, number one, H one, consider authorization and execution of contract C four ninety-five dash twenty fifteen with basingers uniforms and equipment for the provision of, of uniforms to the Department of Corrections, Adult and Juvenile Security Staff at a cost of one hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents from the county's contingency fund.
Good morning Commissioners, Brian Cole, Department of Corrections. Uh, this has been a long road for the County Counselor's Office, the Department of Corrections and Administrative Services and working close with Rich Eckert and, uh, his staff and Betty Griner regarding, uh, uniforms for the Department of Corrections. Early in the year, we were, uh, given approval to submit or go out for an RFP for uniforms and we were able to only get one person or one group who was interested in doing the Department of Corrections who had the, uh, the articles of clothing that we needed, which was a, uh, the type of uniform that we have currently and for our support staff. Um, during that time, uh, which was Airmark who submitted and came back, uh, who is our current, uh, provider where we lease uniforms from. Been looking at the current, uh, contract, uh, we looked at all three of us, uh, the County Counselor's Office, Betty and I, we looked at the contract and determined there was a number of, uh, changes that needed to be done and we submitted those back to Airmark. Uh, well over a month, we did not hear anything that came back and, and trying to move forward because this contract with Airmark was going to be up this year. Uh, so I went back to Rich Eckert and their staff. Jonathan Bazan sent something to, uh, Airmark in October, uh, the beginning of the month and, uh, we did not send it back to their attorney. We did not hear anything and then sent something back again at the end of the month and, and asking if they could give us some any guidance of where they wanted to go and we did not hear anything, uh, back. So in knowing that we need uniforms with Department of Corrections, I started going back to Plan B and started talking to Betty and Rich's office, or Rich and their staff regarding what we needed to do to put our staff in good quality uniforms. And looking at that, um, we have, uh, I was working closely with, uh, basingers there out of Wichita who work currently with the Sheriff's Office, uh, worked with them before, very good, reputable, uh, company that does uniforms, can provide what we need. The first thing we did though, I want to go back, is, is that we went to look at the current vendor who is providing stuff to other agencies in the department or Shawnee County and we were able to get, and I think that was Ameripride, and we were able to get our security staff, or our support staff all with leasing through there, which we were very happy, which is very cost-efficient. And it's basically the same things we're getting, which we thought was the right thing to do and we can budget for that accordingly. Ameripride does not provide what we have. We even went back to them and asked if they had, uh, the type of uniform for, uh, security staff and they basically came to us and said, "We would like to stick with what we do best and it would be on a security-type uniform." So we, I did honor and respect their, uh, their wishes and we decided to go elsewhere. And that's why we, uh, went through the basing route. We were asked and when, uh, we were talking about the possibility of purchasing, um, the existing stock of what we have through Airmark and when we asked about that, um, essentially they indicated that, "Well, we'll sell you everything that you need at new price uniforms and what we'll get here for you and these uniforms are three years old," which I didn't think was very, uh, good to do, number one. Number two, over the past several years, um, we have had a number of problems with our vendor. One of them is, is that, uh, we were having constant mistakes and errors when it came to the invoicing and we were spending several hours of working with Betty's office and at the jail, working with, trying to figure out why there was such problems with the, uh, the invoicing. Number two, the, uh, the quality of customer service and the, uh, the things that we were getting, the timing of this, we weren't getting, we still have stuff that we ordered five months ago that we still do not have. Essentially, when talking to Airmark, they are in the leasing business, um, and we, I still believe we would still have these continued problems. Even if they worked up to sell us their, uh, stuff, um, I don't think the, uh, the contract would be very good. So one of the things that I did talk to Jonathan Bazan and Betty regarding is we all felt it was a bad contract. We all felt that there were some red flags in the way Airmark responded, is that this is something we wanted to do and in my opinion it was not. And, um, I, I'm very confident to believe and to say that I don't believe Betty Griner or, uh, Rich Eckert's office was inclined to support continuing this, this contract. So that's where we're at today, requesting these uniforms. Uh, these are the same type of uniforms that the Sheriff's Office has. This is a, uh, they're very durable off, uh, the same type of things that we've had in the past. It's the same, I'm not asking for anything extra than what we currently have, which is the pants, the, um, the shirt and, um, a jacket. This was nothing that we prepared for or we weren't, we didn't think we were going to have a problem and thus I went to Betty regarding the type of funding source and Betty suggested we look at the contingency. Um, I will say we've done a lot of work, uh, on, uh, this to try to make it work and that I think that the, uh, if you write down the pros and the cons, there was many negatives that outweigh the positives and continuums. So that's why I went to Betty and Rich's office of asking for their support, um, and moving forward and obviously coming to you to ask for your support, uh, because we're, we don't have any uniforms and we're going to have to turn all of these back at the end of the year, um, and, uh, and, uh, so we're going to have to do something. So, uh, with that, I'd stand ready for questions you may have or Betty or Rich's offices here as well.
Brian, we're turning in all the uniforms at the end of the year and with the contract execution today is November the thirtieth. Are you confident that basing is going to be able to come in, measure all of the employees that need uniforms, fit them and get them out to all the employees in thirty days?
Yes, and matter of fact is in, in, in which we try to preach this initiative here, uh, the fittings are scheduled for this week. So, uh, maybe I was trying to be a little overconfident, maybe I don't know. But, uh, uh, I went ahead and went forward in saying that we have to get this done. The, uh, talking with the vendor in Wichita, they're confident that they'll have everything to us by December thirty-first. Everybody would get four uniforms. It may end up being because of different sizes, whatever, some may get two, but we probably, um, I'm confident that we would have everything by the end of the year turned in. But they will be here this week to do two, um, sizes.
Brian, is the full cost then coming out of contingency?
Yes.
So I, and I had some discussion with you on the fact that you had already, um, budgeted some funds for leasing?
Correct.
Of uniforms and so that... -of uniforms, and so that's not, so it's, and how much did you budget for that?
We budgeted almost about forty thousand, about thirty-five, about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars for leasing coming on. That was one thing, and Betty might want to be able to talk to-
And in this budget and in next year's budget, so-
Correct. I was, you know, and I'm for, and even mentioned to Betty regarding that if this is the money for two thousand seventeen, or sixteen, that we want to use to offset this, I'm all for that. I know Betty had mentioned that, you know, with turnover or whatever you have, you may have to still buy, because this is just to get the staff I have here in jail.
Right, this is just the first-
So if there's something that we have, if I use this money, this budget in two thousand sixteen, there's nothing in two thousand sixteen in case I hire your staffs. So this is just to get there, would that be right, Betty? So, it would be to keep that money in the, so if I, when we hire, no matter if, but if we hire, when we hire new staff, we're going to have to, I'm going to have to purchase those, so it's not, this company here will maintain the stock and everything for it, the turnaround is very quick.
And you anticipate that to be at least forty thousand then for new?
Probably thirty-five, something like that, whatever we budget in. It goes into our clothing allow, or clothing area that we do with the AMX, and I think that it's, I haven't got the exact figure, and I hate to even say that, but I know it's going to be close to about thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand is what we do in leasing.
Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. What we really thought was, you know, there will be this upfront, this one-time purchase, but then after that, the cost will probably be similar to the leasing as we purchase new ones each year, and, you know, we'll want to look at that, that we replace some of these, you know, kind of stagger them, so then three years from now, we don't have this big amount again.
Right.
But we think the upfront cost will be a one-time thing, and then the other cost will probably be about the same each year.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think it was a good question, will the uniforms be ready, and I think it was smart to be proactive and do that. But I got to tell you, I'm kind of disappointed in a longtime vendor that we've had in this area. Anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Archer for approval of the contract, seconded by Commissioner Bueller. All in favor say aye, all opposed, passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item five, Administrative Communications. Number one, recognition of upcoming major community events for the month of December at Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Commissioners, Susan Bowel, Hinsland Parks and Recreation. I just wanted to bring to you today some information on the December events going on. Winter Wonderland out at Lake Shawnee, which is a fundraiser for Tark, will continue seven days a week through December thirty-first. Old Prairie Town has a very unique program, holiday happenings, that is December fourth, fifth, eleventh and twelfth, and this is an opportunity to have a very unique candlelit dinner in the mansion, and then later have cider and cookies by the fireside in the cabin and tour Old Prairie Town. On December fifth, there's two events going on. The Central Park Community Center will be hosting its thirty-fifth annual karate spectacular. There's thirty-seven different divisions that students can participate in, and the Crestview Community Center will have its old-fashioned Christmas craft show. And then the following weekend, on December twelfth, two more events. Crestview will have its eighth annual family candy cane hunt and smores with Santa, and the Garfield Community Center will have its fourth annual children's shopping spree, and that's a day where kids can go in and purchase everything under ten dollars, so it's good shopping for kids. And then finally, on December seventeenth, the Shawnee North Community Center will host a special evening where they will have a bedtime story with a special guest, Santa, and then have cookies and milk with Santa. So, those are the activities going on in December, lots of fun things to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other administrative communications?
Commissioners, Tom Locke, Public Works at Solid Waste, I just wanted to announce that this coming Saturday is the first Saturday of December, and Ancestry will be having our Saturday collection event at the Household Packers' Waste Facility, again free of charge for county residents dropping off of paint, oils, pesticides, herbicides, batteries, light bulbs, without sharps, located at one thirty-one North East Forty-Sixth Street, which is about four miles east of the roundabout at Forty-Sixth and North Pico Boulevard on the south side of the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, H.R. Cook, General Manager, Kansas Expo Center, along with what's going on at Parks and Rec. Kansas Expo Center this week welcomes the Kansas Turf Conference in for their annual meeting tomorrow and Wednesday. We also have the Roadrunners back on the ice Wednesday and Thursday of this week, followed by Jeff Dunham on Friday, boxing and MMA in the Blizzard Brawl on Saturday. We also have the Winter States Championship Tournament, the Barrell Racing in Dilma Arena this weekend, following up with the Nitro AMX, or yeah, the Nitro Arena Cross Championships. That's the first event, first time we've had this event, that is next weekend, followed by the PBR Pro Touring Series, the nineteenth and, or the eighteenth and nineteenth of December. So, again, one of the busiest months in Kansas Expo Center for December. The Arena Cross, again, Arena Cross and PBR, there is a five-dollar Shawnee County discount, it does expire two weeks prior to the event, so this is your last week for the Nitro Arena Cross, for your Shawnee County discount, and then next weekend will be the last for the PBR Challenge. So, hope everybody comes out, there's something for everybody at Kansas Expo.
Thank you.
On Friday, December fourth, the Department of Corrections is going to have a fundraiser in the front lobby to go to the benefit to the fitness committee and the fitness room at the Department of Corrections. We do have a physical fitness room with weight equipment, which is kept up by staff, and so they do periodic fundraisers and things like that. A lot of good Mexican food this week. On Friday, please come over and enjoy being in the front lobby between ten and one there, and it's a good time. Friday, Friday night, sure.
Thank you. Any other administrative communications? Commissioner Bueller?
Hello.
Commissioner Archer?
No.
Neither do I, so our next item.
Item six, executive session.
There is a need for an executive session today. I'll make a motion for thirty minutes on issues of non-elected personnel and consultation with the attorney for the border agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Archer. All in favor say aye, all opposed, we are in executive session for thirty minutes.
We are back from executive session. No action was taken. We are adjourned.